All right, welcome. It is 5 o'clock on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape Girardeau. Welcome to everyone. Thank you for being here. We will begin with our invocation by Father John Harth, the police chaplain in Cape Girardeau, and then follow that with our pledge of allegiance. So if you would all rise, thank you.
As usual, my preparatory remarks will take longer than the invocation itself. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I hope my attire hasn't offended your sensitivities. I'm going to a volleyball game after spending some time with you all. If you haven't had the chance to read my shirt...
Love it.
I'll let you all see it when I turn around. By the way, when we have clergy meetings, we all sit in the back. It's the only chance we get. It occurred to me an hour ago, literally an hour ago, that I have been coming to Cape Girardeau City Council meetings off and on for 50 years. At first, in early 1973, as news director for KGMO Radio, and then the seven years I got to spend at KFS12. John Ramey, may he rest in peace, was here for The Missourian, and we had fun. We covered many meetings together, so we had a lot of good times. So I started in '73, coming. Mark, that's a few years before you got to, just a few, just a few, but I remember that. All right, enough blather. Let's bow our heads. Blessed are you, Lord our God, Maker of the universe and Father of all. Look with love on the people of Cape Girardeau and keep them safe in your service. Guide the members of this council. Help them to work together for the good of all. Bring success to their efforts and reward them and us for all the good we do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation coming out in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have no action tonight for our study sessions. We do have two presentations. First, we will begin with the Silver Springs 2 Apartment Tax Credit Project by Mako Development.
My name is Jason Maddox. I'm with Mako Development Company. Our company develops affordable housing primarily for seniors, and we haven't been here for 50 years, but our company has been active in the community for 30 years. So we developed our first senior property here in 1993, '94, when I was a SEMO student here, and since then, we've developed three others. And the first property that we developed, Heritage Manor down off of West End Boulevard, we were successful last year in receiving financing in order to renovate that. Although it's 30 years old, it's aged, but it's still in good shape, and soon, probably at the end of this month, we will start construction to completely renovate that property with new roofs, windows, doors, cabinets, flooring, appliances, HVAC units, water heaters, top to bottom. So the point of me telling you that is, we like to stand with the project for the duration. We try to use high-quality construction materials. We have onsite management and maintenance to take care of any issues, and we want to build them so that they stand the test of time. So what I'm here for today is to ask for a resolution of support on another proposal that we will be submitting to MHDC, Missouri Housing Development Commission, at the end of the month for another senior proposal that will be known as Silver Springs 2 Apartments. And that proposal would consist of 60 units for seniors, and senior, in this case, is defined as 55-plus. And I mentioned the four proposals or the four projects that we've already completed. At any given time, those properties remain full, and we'll have anywhere from 150 to 200 applicants on the waiting list. So there's a huge, huge demand for senior housing here in this community. I've brought some information to show you what we're proposing. What you see in front of you is what it'll look like. It'll be a three-story elevator building, and we've started doing these recently, and what we found is that seniors really like the safety and security of this type of building. However, it also, in the center of the building, there's a community room that gives them an opportunity to interact and socialize. The community room can be, it'll have a kitchen that'll allow them to have luncheons, birthday parties, things like that. We'll have room for exercise classes. There's a fitness room included in there. So it gives them that time to interact with one another and not just stay in their apartments all the time. So we found this is a really successful design for us, and this is what the architectural renting looks like at this point. And so the site plan that you see in front of you, the complex to the west is Silver Springs 1 that we completed a few years ago, and it's also senior 55-plus. It leased up in 45 days, and it remains full. So obviously, again, the needs there. So this will be, we already own the property. It's already zoned appropriately, so it's basically teed up and ready to go. This gives you the information I just mentioned and kind of a timeline. So what we would do is submit this application at the end of this month, would hopefully find out by the end of the year whether or not the property would be approved for funding. If it is, then about this time next year, we would start construction and probably look at a 14-month construction period before we would finish and start leasing. This tells you a little bit more about it. Right now, we're working through our financial models, and it looks like the rents on the majority of the units are going to be about $675, which is a little bit higher than we've had in the past, but operating expenses have gone up tremendously over the past couple of years. So, you know, we try, we work really hard to keep those rents as low as possible so that it stays, you know, in the range where the demand and where the income range is for the residents that are leasing it. There will be nine apartments, as you can see, that are set aside for residents with special needs. We'll have a lead referral agency that we'll work with that will provide services for those residents. So this gives you an idea of kind of what range we're looking at. We would pay all of the water, sewer, and trash. Residents pay for their own electricity. Those are some of the amenities that I mentioned before. So this is the first floor that you see. When you walk in, there's a leasing office. There's just a sitting area for visitors. On the second floor, there's the kitchen area. There's the room in the center where activities, like I said, they'll have exercise classes, different things if they want to meet, watch a movie, put puzzles together, potluck dinners, things like that. And the third floor is just more common space. There's the fitness area. So there's lots of space for them to interact. This gives you more information about the units. Washer and dryer will be included with all the appliances that you see there. You can see these that you're, you may have already looked at, it's pretty standard here, what we're including as far as the floor plans. And here's a very similar design that we just finished. This is actually in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma, just outside of Tulsa. This was '93 units that we constructed there and it leased up also in about 45 days. This is for seniors, but that gives you some of the ideas of the finishes that you'll see in Silver Springs 2. That's some of the sitting areas where the residents will meet and gather. Some of the finishes inside. This will be pretty standard for what you would see in these apartments. So with that said, you guys are familiar with me, so I appreciate you allowing me to come here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a few questions, Mayor.
Please.
So you said you have four of these, are there four in the local community of these type of buildings for seniors or throughout other states as well? I thought you have four?
There's four in Cape.
Oh, four in Cape, okay.
But they're not the single building. They're just seniors, like garden style.
Okay. And then, I serve on the commission, so what are you seeking from the commission in able to be ordered to provide this opportunity for Cape?
We are going to seek an allocation of low-income housing tax credits.
Okay.
Federal and state credits.
Is this your first project with the commission?
No, ma'am. We've been involved since the program started.
Okay.
And we've, like I said, this would be the fifth allocation, sixth allocation in Cape, but we're working on two right now in Troy and Raymore. We've done, we've done two senior developments in Perryville, so we've been in the program or involved with the program for a long, long time.
I just wanted, because we've been trying to encourage in, like, southeast Missouri and kind of be in the voice with that. Yeah, we do make the decisions in the December. Probably go to staff now, so probably want to talk to you more, just, you know, so I can have the information and be able to sure they know that.
Absolutely. I've been southeast Missouri all my life. I live in Kennet. I was a graduate here at SEMO, so did my wife. My son just graduated SEMO two years ago. He was on the football team here, so I've been around SEMO, or Cape, for a long, long time.
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate hearing that history and the background. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Maddox. The next presentation we have is for Starview 2 Apartments Tax Credit Project from Starview Development.
My name is Pete Ramsell. I'm here as a consultant for a Phase 2. 32 units were built a couple of years ago on this particular site by Starview Development. Brad Slosser. Brad is a local developer, a businessman, and so he's well-known in the community. He bought this old trailer court, if some of you will remember that, horrible condition. Cleaned all of that up. We did a Phase 1, and so we're back asking you and MHDC to fund the Phase 2. Phase 1 was 32 units. Phase 2 will be immediately across the street that we installed, and that'll be an additional 32 units, 24 two-bedrooms, eight three-bedrooms. 24 of the units, again, two bedrooms. The rents will be based upon basically cost. And what I mean by that is tax credit equity, both federal and state equity, will fund this project. It'll be very little debt, and so the rents are affordable. But the driving force in today's market is basically operating expenses. Construction costs obviously are through the roof. What people don't realize, I think, is that operating costs are also through the roof. And so those operating costs mean a little higher rents than we'd like to charge, but it is what it is. But the tax credit program has been good. We've developed housing all over the state, and so we're coming back for Phase 2. Phase 1 rented immediately. I mean, within 30 days of opening, it was completely rented. We've got a waiting list of over 100 people, so we know there's a need here, and I don't doubt the need for the seniors, but you also have a tremendous need for family. This particular aspect is called workforce housing, meaning that we've set aside 25% of the units at a higher income level, which is 80% of median income. Most of the units, as you probably know, is at 60%. 60% for one person is approximately $32,000. 80% for one person is approximately $42,000. So that gives you a little idea of the benefit of having some 80% units. Again, workforce housing, we know there's a need here, tremendous need here. We got the waiting list, so we're anxious to do the second phase. The other significance of second phase is we only did 32 units. Adding 32, we can do it with the existing manager, full-time manager, full-time maintenance person. We have the community building, the playground. We'll add a pavilion and a playground to this site as well, so it really helps us, help the tenant. I think we've got the pictures up there for you. You can see Phase 1 right there, and we're just going to come off the entrance street from Phase 1, do the loop, and so that's where the two buildings, the two 16-unit buildings will be, a pavilion and a playground in the center. See if I can get that to move. Guess I've got to hold it down. That's King's Highway. It'll always be King's Highway, as you can tell, I'm old. I think we were calling it Blue Parkway now, but you can see the entrance. We put that entrance in for Phase 1. That was at a tremendous expense to the developer, but now we're taking advantage of it and just coming off of that, and there's the second, second-phase site. This, again, will probably show the two buildings and the units there. Floor plans, two-bedroom, two-bath, three-bedroom, two-bath, fully equipped, including washer and dryers. It's market rate construction that's available to people who need affordable housing. It's as simple as that. So that's really kind of our story. We're asking for resolutions of support. With that resolution of support, we'll submit to MHDC. MHDC is now on a point system, and that is really the overriding factor. How do you get more points? Resolution of support actually helps us, maybe not with points, but it helps us with the staff, and it's just a statement of your support for the project and your need in the community for this project. So I'm here tonight for Brad to ask you for your support and help, and we'll do everything we can. We'll get this application submitted, and hopefully we'll find out in December. I think we'll probably start, if we get funded, in June or July or August of next year. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? No. I would just add, the resolutions for support are included in our consent agenda tonight, so. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for allowing me to do it.
All right. Next, we have communications and reports from counsel. Anyone want to...
I just want to say thank you to staff, Casey, Trevor, Kenny. There's a lot of action going on in streets, and I've had three or four residents call and thank counsel and staff for the attention, and I was able to forward on the list that Trevor had forwarded to counsel about the upcoming projects for the fall. So there's a lot of residents that are extremely happy about that, and I just want to send on kudos to everyone involved.
I'm going to also send out just a real quick kudos to Brennan Tote and Michelle Latham at the Broadway Theater. I've never seen a project go from demolition order to announcing a retail tenant in the course of less than four months. Pretty remarkable stuff, and so it was just exciting to get that press release the other day when they were already announcing a retail tenant for the Broadway Theater. Just shows how far that project has come just over the course of this summer. So it's neat to drive past and see that, and it's really even neater to see that there's a local investment in a small business that's going to be right there on Broadway, so.
Anyone else, counsel? I just wanted to note that the St. James AME Church is celebrating their 160th anniversary this coming weekend, which is a remarkable thing for our community. Wanted to highlight that, so on Sunday, September 10th, they're having that celebration. There'll be worship services, but then at 3:00, there's a special worship service, dinner to follow, and they are also encouraging, if anyone wants to participate in that service, you may do so by, in various ways. If you want to contact the church between now and Thursday, that is being, that would be appreciated by the church. So just wanted to highlight that. That's a really unique thing in our city. Pastor Geneva, thank you for what you're doing there, and kudos for that longevity. That's amazing. Anyone else, counsel? No? All right. We will move into items for discussion. First, are there appearances by anyone as an advisory board applicant here tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, City Council. My name is Dan Stidz. I live at 2533 Ford Drive here in Cape. I'm just making an application for the golf course advisory board, and I'm just presenting myself in front of you tonight, if you have any questions for me.
Just a real quick question. So why golf course?
I'm sorry?
Why the golf course advisory board?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Why the golf course advisory board?
Well, just, I play a little bit of golf, so I want to, you know, get back to the community a little bit. I spent a lot of time, when I was working, on the license board several years, as a matter of fact, on that. So just something to get back in and give some time back to the city.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Stidz. Anyone else? No? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskins.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. We added several items on the consent agenda for your review tonight. We'll start with number four, request to apply for a Reconnecting Communities Grant. We applied for this grant, I think, about a year ago, and we were unsuccessful, but we've learned a lot since then, and so we would certainly ask for your support in allowing us to apply yet again. Number five, we have an LNI agreement to place improvements and utility easements along Cape West Crossing Phase 2. That's an amended one as well. And of course, number six, another LNI agreement to place improvements along Flat Avenue north of Jasmine Lane in the Belldridge subdivision. Number seven, an agreement with Loppi Cement Finishing, Inc. for the concrete street repair that Bert talked about. Number eight, an agreement with Apex, again, Asphalt, for the 2023 asphalt overlay program. And of course, number nine, we're excited about the demolition contract that we're about to award to JAC3, Contracting for Demolition of Buildings at Various Locations Across the City. And of course, number 10, you heard from Mako, they're requesting tax credits for the development along the Silver Springs Phase 2 apartment housing development. And of course, number 11, another tax credit request from Starview Development, Starview Apartment Housing Development Proposal. And finally, number 12, a request to enter into a contract with Riverside Roofing for the removal, replacement, and disposal of the current flat roof system out at the airport. Mayor, that concludes the consent review.
Okay, thank you. We will now move into regular session and begin with our call to order and the roll call vote by Mr. Taylor.
Mark Bliss.
Here.
Robbie Gard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Dan Presson.
Here.
Tamika Randall.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Shannon Truxell.
Here. All right, counsel, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Presson, Ms. Randall. Any further discussion? All in favor of the agenda, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda carries. We have no public hearings tonight. We have a lengthy consent agenda. Mr. Young, take it away.
Bill 23-123, an ordinance approving the record plat of Maurer Family Land. Bill 23-123, an ordinance approving the record plat of Maurer Family Land. Bill 23-124, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for property along Minnesota Avenue at the intersection of Route 74 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-124, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for property along Minnesota Avenue at the intersection of Route 74 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-125, a resolution authorizing an application to the United States Department of Transportation with the Reconnecting Communities Neighborhoods Grant Program and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Bill 23-126, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a licensed indemnity agreement with CWC Hospitality LLC for installation of a retaining wall at 433 Cape West Crossings in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-127, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a licensed indemnity agreement with Ronald M. and Charlotte A. Angles just to place certain improvements on an unimproved portion of Flat Avenue in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-128, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Loppi Cement Finishing, Inc. for concrete street repair 2023 project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-129, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Apex Peyton Company for the 2023 asphalt overlay program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-130, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a demolition contract with JAC3 Contracting LLC for the demolition of buildings at various locations in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-131, a resolution of support for the proposal for Mako Development Company LLC for the Silver Springs 2 Apartments Housing Development in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-132, a resolution of support for the proposal for Starview Development LLC for the Starview 2 Apartments Housing Development in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 23-133, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Riverside Roofing Company LLC for installation of a new roof at the Cape Girardeau Regional
Thank you, Mr. Young. Counsel, we have a consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote for number 10 and 11 and abstention due to financial conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Gard. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor then of consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That agenda carries. We had no items removed. We have several new ordinances tonight, and as always, we will have staff present those and then have some time for any public comment or questions, and then the counsel will take that up. If you are here to make a comment or question, please limit your comments to three minutes. Appreciate that. So we'll begin with Bill 23-134, an ordinance approving the record plat of Kennedy's second edition. This is the first reading. Mr. Shrimplin.
Good evening. This is simply combining two lots into one. There is a pair of five-foot utility easements that run along the lot line to be eliminated, so the owner is proposing to have those easements released as part of this plat.
All right, thank you. Is anyone from the public wishing to make a comment? No? Hearing none, then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill number 23-134?
So moved.
Mr. Presson?
Second.
Mr. Truxell? Any further discussion? All right. Hearing then, none, then. All in favor of Bill 23-134? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have Bill 23-135, an ordinance approving the record plat of Essendale Subdivisions. The first reading. Mr. Shrimplin.
This one consists of three lots that are being re-subdivided into two. One owner owns two of the lots, and they are splitting one of their lots with their neighbor, and then each of them are taking their respective halves of that lot and merging them with their adjacent lots.
All right. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment? Okay. Hearing none, then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill number 23-135?
So moved.
Mr. Bliss?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Presson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Bill 23-135? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, we have Bill 23-136, an ordinance appropriating funds for operating expenditures, capital expenditures, debt service expenditures, and transfers for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. It's the first reading. Ms. Mills.
So the attached appropriation is an ordinance that's done routinely. So the attached appropriation is an ordinance that's done routinely. It's submitted each year after the end of a fiscal year, and it covers expenditures occurring during the fiscal year that weren't appropriated during the June 30, 23 budget process. So they weren't originally included in the 23 original budget. Throughout the year, counsel does get certain appropriations for certain expenditures. These are the leftovers, if you will, those that need to be reviewed as a final pass, as a cleanup. It is completely procedural, and again, is in order to fund these things that weren't previously done. We categorize them up into operating expenditures, capital expenditures, debt service expenditures, and transfers that have to be made. That's how we go through and allocate and find all of them. Of note, some of the operating expenditures, one thing I wanted to note to counsel, is the largest part of the operating expenditure appropriation is associated with additional claims cost with our healthcare policy. We all knew that this occurred back last fall. That's when we start pricing for renewals. Our renewal is January 1 of every year, so right now, we're in the process of going out and effectively trying to re-quote and get some proposals out there to mitigate our costs. It's noteworthy to say that our health costs really increased a lot during last fiscal year. The increase was 48%. We had budgeted $3.3 million, but the cost came in at 4.9. It'll be extremely critical for the general fund to be able to mitigate these costs this year. The second area where the largest part of the adjustments are needed, the appropriations are needed, is with regard to capital expenditures. One of those is simply a procedural thing. We had a CARES Act-funded project at the airport, and it, there was 1.8 million of the cost that just did not get appropriated in the budget. Nothing went over, nothing, we just had to get that additional appropriation in there for a formality. In addition to that, the other noteworthy capital expenditure was one for five new police cars. We're finding, and we're continuing to find, that problem this year as well, that vehicles are extremely difficult to come by, and so the amounts budgeted don't always target exactly what we're able to find. These were a great find, and so we had the opportunity to buy, and we did. That was one of my first things when I arrived, that we did. The other area is transfers. These transfers are noteworthy this year because they're required as a result of additional tax revenues that we received. So we budget, estimating that we had a certain amount of tax revenues to come in. When they exceed, then we have to accommodate the fact that we got more than we thought we would when we did the original budget. All a matter, of course, and the funding for all of the, oh, well, I noted that, sorry, the funding for those transfers are as a result of the additional revenues.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment? No? Seeing none, then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 23-136?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gard, Ms. Randall? Further discussion? You know, Ms. Mills, I'm sorry, I had just something to, it's, just wanted to point out or ask the question of, you know, this is, these are not decisions we're making tonight regarding this funding.
No.
Yeah. These are, these are decisions that have been made, approved.
Absolutely.
In the past year.
Yes. It's a formality. Like I expressed, you know, the health insurance, we knew it went up. We knew, we made the active decision that we were going to have to see how the fund behaved throughout the year. This is the end result, and so it's a formality to appropriate that money.
And Mayor, the alternative would have been to pass that cost along to the, to the employees. And instead of doing that, we, as a staff, decided that it was the right thing to do to go ahead and eat that cost on the front end.
Well, and additional instances here are things that have already been, you know, decisions that have been made, purchases that have been made, et cetera.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, then. All those in favor of Bill 23-136, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right. We had two appointments to make tonight. First is for the Golf Course Advisory Board. We had two members to select, and the results of that were from the, from the counsel. First, we, the JCs get to select a representative. That member is Eric Kreglow. And then counsel also voted to, to appoint Lindsey Pippens to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Counsel, is there a motion to approve those two, two recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bliss, Ms. Truxell? Any further discussion? All in favor, then, of voting in Eric Kreglow and Lindsey, Lindsey Pippens to the Golf Course Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. They are in. Congratulations to them. And then, secondly, we had one member to vote into the Public Library Board. We have actually ended up with a tie, counsel, between Lauren Clark-Hill and Lena Matukiewicz. And so therefore, counsel, we will revote only between those two candidates. Please, if we can pass these down here. So we'll just do that real quickly, and everyone, hold your, hold your breath, and I'd like to have some music queued up the next time this happens. And so counsel, we have voted in Lauren Clark-Hill for that position. Is there a motion to approve Lauren Clark-Hill for that spot?
So moved.
Ms. Truxell? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Presson? All in favor, then, of approving Lauren Clark-Hill for the Public Library Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to Ms. Hill. All right. We now, at the end of our meeting, as always, we have time for other business. This is where audience members may, may come forward to make comments or pose questions about anything not listed on tonight's agenda. We have, the rules in place are that, audience members, you have up to, up to three minutes to discuss those things, and we have a 15-minute total time limit for this part of the meeting. We have had a lengthy registration of, of people who have asked to be part of this, and so I'm not sure if we'll get to everyone, but we'll proceed and, and get started and see, see how far we get along. First, we have Alex Gasser. Is that, she's here? Thank you.
My name's Alex Gasser, and I currently live at 2110 Kenneth Drive. I'm here to represent my Leadership Cape class of 2023 group's project proposal, which you have in front of you. A little bit of background about me is I used to work at the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Garden and managed our Zoo Access For All program, which focused on ways on how to make the zoo more inclusive and inviting for everyone. So because of this experience, I am always looking for ways that anywhere that I frequent can be more inclusive and accessible. A fact, one in four adult Americans have some type of disability, and one in three live in Missouri with a disability. A lot of the time, cities, businesses, and organizations focus on accommodating with those with disabilities versus at looking how they can be really more inclusive and more accessible. So my Leadership Cape group is proposing the formation of an accessibility advisory board for the city of Cape Girardeau. The mission of this newly-formed advisory board would be, the accessibility advisory board's mission is to assist the city of Cape Girardeau in making accessible city improvements. By the practice of making information, activity, activities, and/or environments sensible, meaningful, and usable for as many people as possible, the city of Cape Girardeau will become one of the most welcoming and inclusive cities in the area. We would love to have this advisory board be made up of persons who are self-advocates, parents, or persons from organizations that work in the accessibility world. Board members would be liaisons, promote recommendations for city improvements, and provide opportunities for engagement and education. If a business is looking to make improvements to make their space more accessible, this board could provide recommendations. If the city is planning to expand or update a facility, the board could provide recommendations on how to look at this expansion or update through an accessibility lens. We firmly believe that this advisory board makes the most sense being placed as a city advisory board. As the first couple of places we looked at making some recommendations include the Sportsplex, Cape Splash, and downtown Cape Girardeau. Having it placed as a city advisory board gives recommendations more clout and authority as an accessibility expert and has a centralized location for queries. I mentioned education as a responsibility of this advisory board. Many don't understand how the lack of accessible facilities can impact a family, but if you have a family member with a disability that needs accommodations, having an accessible facility means the world. I'm happy to provide examples and feedback from a recent forum our Leadership Cape group held at the library. For the first time in a long time, several of the participants in the forum said they felt seen and heard. Our group will actually be presenting this project this Friday at Century Casino. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gasser, for the time. And I should note, again, as a reminder, everyone, this is not, this is a time that where the counsel does not respond, but thank you. Next, we have Mary Ann Allen.
My name is Mary Ann Allen. My husband, Jody, and I live in Cape, and I own five stores in the mall. I don't know if anybody's been in them, but, and one in West County Mall in St. Louis. I'm here tonight to ask your vote in favor for the proposal, a development of West Park Mall. And I don't know if you guys know this, but, and this is off my thing, the mall is not big manufacturers of companies. Most of them are small businesses like me. I mean, I had a guy come from Paducah. They own the mall down there, and they've been very successful, very successful, and I'm very passionate about it. It's people that run small businesses that are in the mall now. I don't know if you've been to Walk to Mall or anything like that, but I've been in the mall for 18 years and have become family with most of the people there. We get customers in our stores every day who travel several hours to shop with us. We come, they come to the mall because it's the only or large retailer space between St. Louis and Memphis, and it's convenient to High 55. If there were more stores and restaurants and activities, families could enjoy the mall a lot more. It would attract more customers, and the dollars spent would increase. Employment would increase to with each store that was added. I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
That's okay.
Every day, we listen to customers that can't wait to see what the improvements to the new owners in store. I mean, I can't imagine, you know, taking on a big project like that, like these men have done, and then to be fought like they have with other people within the community like they have. I mean, you're talking about a blow. That's a pretty hard blow to take, the way they've been fought. I don't know if you've read the billboards, but they're horrible. It's horrible to see stuff like that go on in Cape Girardeau, because I don't see it in any other city, and it makes me sick to my stomach. My point is, it just, it does not benefit the mall, but every store, restaurant, and hotel in Cape when people come. We need to stop with the fighting, the selfishness, and the lies on the billboards all over town. Improvements to the mall would increase the amount of sales tax paid to the city, and this tax revenue would benefit the entire community and the schools, and they know it. You could solve problems like better roads, raise our salaries for people that need desperately, like the police force, the firefighters, and all that works for the city. Great things in business are never done by one person. They are done by a team of people. If everyone is moving forward together, the success will take care of itself. This is how a city grows, and if you don't, then we, it'll never evolve. I ask you to provide the mall's development group with the incentives they request in order to benefit the city and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, we have Brock Freeman. Is he here? Not here. Okay. Moving on, then, Ms. Whitney Woods. Not here either. All right. Amber French.
My name is Amber French, and I live at 22 Edgewood Road, Cape Girardeau. Ladies and gentlemen of the Cape Girardeau City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. I'm here to address a pressing issue affecting our community, the homeless situation in Cape Girardeau. Homelessness is not a problem relegated to urban areas. It's a stark reality right here in our own city. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts already being made in addressing homelessness in Cape Girardeau by highlighting one such organization making a significant impact in our community, Street Level Cape Girardeau. Street Level, as some of you may be aware, is a local nonprofit committed to helping the homeless population in Cape Girardeau, providing essential services such as shelter, food, transportation, and medical care to our neighbors without homes. Last winter, Street Level spent approximately $10,000 hoteling people during harsh winter conditions. Street Level also rescued one lady seeking shelter on a park playground during an ice storm. The lady suffered frostbite on her fingertips before Street Level found her. This is one of the many examples of service Street Level has provided our community. However, their resources are limited, and demand for their service continues to grow. This brings me to the heart of my message today. While we can be proud of the work organizations like Street Level are doing, we must realize their resources are stretched thin. I urge this esteemed council to expand funding for three, for three things. First, hoteling the homeless during freezing winter conditions. Second, establishing warming centers for the upcoming winter. And third, creating a shelter that not only provides a safe and secure environment for those who have no home, but also provides access to essential services like counseling, life skills training, and healthcare. Shelters provide a path towards stability and self-sufficiency, allowing individuals to regain their independence and contribute positively to our community. Expanding funding for sheltering individuals is not just a humanitarian gesture, it is an investment in the future of our city. Stable housing is the foundation upon which individuals can build their lives, find employment, and contribute to the local economy. It reduces the strain on emergency services and law enforcement, leading to cost savings for our community in the long run. In conclusion, I implore, implore the city of Cape Girardeau to take action on these pressing issues. Let's expand funding for sheltering our neighbors experiencing homelessness and partner with organizations like Street Level to ensure that our homeless population has the support they deserve. Together, we can make a difference in the lives of our neighbors, strengthen our community, and hold up the values of compassion and empathy that make Cape Girardeau a great place to call home. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, we can build a brighter future for all residents of Cape Girardeau, including those who are experiencing homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. French. And next, we have Lisa Green.
I feel like I'm not prepared. Everybody's got their little papers.
Everybody's got their little paperwork. First of all, I want to say that I took that Citizen Academy class, you gave me that certificate. We learned so much more than gutter or sewers that you mentioned that day. We learned so much more. We learned about the airport, the tax assessing. I missed the, I see a hot one, had to work, so I want to take that again. And also, I wanted to speak, talk about transparency. I told you guys how valuable it was to recycle, reuse, repurpose, and restore. But I forgot to tell you, because I was nervous, ask permission when you go to containers, if you can get their stuff, you know? I ask all the time, I don't go and take stuff, you know? Just thought I'd tell you guys that. And they would tell me, yeah, you can, Lisa, just make sure you don't get hurt. Okay, I don't know if they said that because they was worried about I'd fall in or something, or because I was a girl. Anyway, I encourage everybody to recycle, reuse, repurpose, and restore. Go green.
Thank you so much. And we have one more, Ms. Cynthia Dergan.
Sorry it takes me so long to get up here.
We won't start the timer till...
Thank you. I'm Cynthia Dergan. I'm here to speak for Street Level Cape Girardeau, and I live at 2824 Oakshire Circle, Cape Girardeau. I'm sure that all of you have seen some of our chronically homeless neighbors walking on the street with a backpack or holding a sign at an intersection. What some members of this council may not understand is that only about 15% to 20% of homeless people are visibly homeless. Their true numbers ebb and flow largely invisible to the public. So I'm here to tell you about a few of the people that you have not seen, people that Street Level helped in August, some of whom will tonight be sleeping in an illegal location because this council refuses to establish a legal camping area where people may sleep in peace. Last month, Street Level helped a newly homeless young pregnant woman, she was possibly a minor, who appealed to Catholic charities for help. Vicky and others there did the best they could, but they scrambled for a week to find an apartment to place her in because this city has a severe affordable housing problem about which apparently city government is doing nothing. There is too much competition for the lowest-cost rentals, which drives up prices from the bottom and often makes it impossible for the helping agencies to access housing that their grants or HUD will cover. Catholic charities provided some nights in a hotel for this girl, and Street Level provided more, and our cost in doing so could have gotten nine unsheltered people out of an ice storm this coming winter. Yet we could not say no to this girl because there was no place else for her to go. You all know about the apartment fire last month. Street Level, among other nonprofits and churches, paid to hotel some of the dozen or more people who were displaced by that fire, and as we worked with them, I was appalled to learn that the city has no burnout fund to help people in their position. I have lived in small, unprofessionally governed towns that did better than Cape Girardeau does, to my eternal bewilderment. With the help of Habitat and other nonprofits, this particular couple did eventually get into an apartment, one that will cost them more than 30% of their social security income, putting them at risk of financial disaster down the road, but it was the closest to affordable that they could find, and they took it in spite of the landlord's dreadful reputation. Again, Street Level's contribution to just this one couple could have gotten nine people out of a snowstorm. Also, last month, Street Level provided a tent to a newly homeless young couple who can't afford rent while the young man attends a daily outpatient therapy program. They wanted to camp legally, they want to live legally, but they can't due to the city ordinance, which forbids homeless people from sleeping on public property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dergan. That is it for our agenda tonight. Counsel, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Card, Ms. Randall, any discussion? All in favor then of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? We are adjourned.